Roll call. Mr. Abrascado.
Here.
Ms. Alberti.
Here.
Ms. Alcurey.
Present.
Mr. Grillo.
Here.
Ms. Jarvis's apps. Mr. Schwett.
Here.
Mr. Vuno.
Here.
Mr. Musto.
Here.
Adequate notice that this meeting has been provided by the following means. Annual notice was sent to the Herald and News, Record, South Burdenite, The Observer, Town and Clerk. We both sit in the lobby of town hall and board office setting forth company scheduled work meetings, public meeting of the board. Motion approved minutes for meeting number eighteen.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Abrascado.
Four.
Ms. Alberti.
Four.
Ms. Alcurey.
Four.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Mr. Schwett.
Four.
Mr. Vuno.
Four.
Mr. Musto.
Four.
Anybody interested in speaking around agenda items? Hearing none. Uh, Ron Schwett, uh, finance committee?
Yes. Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of finance committee may so indicate now in a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I make a motion that we accept items one through nine.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Abrascado.
Four.
Ms. Alberti.
Four.
Ms. Alcurey.
Four.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Mr. Schwett.
Four.
Mr. Vuno.
Four.
Mr. Musto. Four. I just want to point out that the, uh, the order found that there was no audit bonding and recommendations prior to the year. That's thanks to our school business initiative, who's done a phenomenal job this past year and trying to make everything work. Education encouragement meeting.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of education encouragement committee may so indicate now in a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I make a motion that ones four be approved.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Abrascado.
Four.
Ms. Alberti.
Four.
Ms. Alcurey.
Four.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Mr. Schwett.
Four.
Mr. Vuno.
Four.
Mr. Musto.
Four.
Rules and regulations committee.
Mr. Abrascado. Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of rules and regulations committee may so indicate now in a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I make a motion that we accept items one, two, and three.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Abrascado.
Four.
Ms. Alberti.
Four.
Ms. Alcurey.
Four.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Mr. Schwett.
Four.
Mr. Vuno.
Four.
Mr. Musto.
Four.
Safety and security committee. Uh, Ms. Jarvis is here. There's only two of us. I guess in the future, there's going to be some combined committees and we will have those, uh, uh, shown on the next board agenda. Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under category of safety and security committee may so indicate now in a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I make a motion to approve numbers one through four.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Abrascado.
Four.
Ms. Alberti.
My pleasure.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Ms. Alcurey.
Four.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Mr. Schwett.
Four.
Mr. Vuno.
Four.
Mr. Musto.
Four.
Student activities and substance abuse, uh, number.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of student activities and recognition committee may so indicate now in a separate motion for each of the accepted, accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I make a motion that the following student activities numbered one be second.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Abrascado.
Four.
Ms. Alcurey.
Four.
Sorry, Ms. Alberti.
Four.
Ms. Alcurey.
Four.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Mr. Schwett. Mr. Vuno.
Four.
Mr. Musto.
Four.
Uh, Mr. Grillo, did you read the business?
Yes.
We have resolved this voluntary Board of Education accept an ongoing donation from Mr. John Spagnolo. Spagnolo? Through TIA, A, P, S, C, R, E, F, employment, employee, giving campaign. Sorry about that. It's on the list.
Yeah, second.
Sorry.
Roll call. Mr. Spagnolo works for TIA, CREF, and he has a matching donation. It's ongoing. We receive checks on a quarterly basis. Meet up at Lindhurst High School. So, we're acknowledging his ongoing, uh, donation. This is until he, until he stops. So, his employer matches it and they send us a check. Mr. Abrascado.
Four.
Ms. Alberti.
Four.
Ms. Alcurey.
Four.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Mr. Schwett.
Four.
Mr. Vuno.
Four.
Mr. Musto.
Four.
Uh, is that part of this?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of the Board of Education and the Central Office of Administration, I'd like to welcome you and thank you for being here this evening and hope that you and your family and friends had a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday and, uh, welcome back. It'll be intense over the next four weeks, three weeks before our upcoming holiday, New Year. So, we're delighted to be here. We won't have another Board of Education meeting until January or March. That will be announced publicly. You have, uh, the superintendent's report and once again, there are a myriad of announcements, topics, recognitions. Obviously, uh, we, Central Office Administration and the Board of Education extend our appreciation for the great work of the wonderful professionals that we have in our district and the great work of our students in our district. Most of the items in the superintendent's report, which obviously I'm not going to take the time to review, that's for your reading, um, at your leisure. But if anyone has any questions about any of the information in the superintendent's report, please feel free to call my office. I'd be happy to, uh, discuss any of those topics with you. Um, I have a very brief introductory statement to make prior to the PARC presentation that will be made. There'll be a PowerPoint presentation facilitated by Assistant Superintendent Mrs. Shawna DeMarco. First, I think it's most important that I extend, uh, on behalf of the Board and the Administration, our respect and our appreciation, recognition to, uh, with respect to our educators for their dedication, with respect to our students for their hard work, with respect to the parent community, obviously, for their interests, cooperation in working with our educators to, to better the educational experiences that their children have in the district. I'd also, of course, like to extend, uh, thank you to the community for its ongoing support of our educational program. This evening, uh, Lindhurst, uh, will be, Lindhurst Board of Education and Administration will be making a presentation with respect to the spring 2015 PARC results, the standardized test results. Lindhurst, like all school districts, experienced our fair share of challenges and respects, particularly when it comes to reporting publicly the, uh, test scores, the performance of our students in grade levels three through eleven, uh, as assessed by, as tested by PARC. One of our major challenges over the years has been the recognition and reputation, um, of Lindhurst as not being necessarily a high-performing school district from an academic perspective, particularly in the area of high-stakes testing. Historically, we have not measured up to some of the elite academic districts in Burton County and in the state of New Jersey. Consequently, uh, many in our community have been critical of our overall performance and ranking on standardized tests, whether they be SATs, whether they be ACTs, whether they be HSPT, uh, or in the past, New Jersey ASK. This evening, Mrs. DeMarco will make a presentation focusing on the results of the spring 2015 administration of PARC. New Jersey is one of only seven states scheduled to administer PARC tests in the 2015-16 school year, down from twenty states nationwide that administered PARC. That administered PARC, um, since 2011, when New Jersey became part of a consortium, um, of states that participated in PARC. Many states have dropped out of testing consortiums to fit their own needs and local politics, state politics. They date, the data that you will see this evening will relatively and comparatively reflect an overall positive at average score performance across the board from grades three through eleven. And we're delighted to set, to announce that and Mrs. DeMarco will give you greater detail of that evidence. Some general information about PARC. PARC tests are aligned to a set of national standards, the Common Core. The Common Course test standards arose from a simple idea, creating a set of challenging academic expectations for all students to improve achievement and college and career readiness. There is a long and controversial, if I may, history regarding the evolution of standards, the standards movement, and the development and institution of assessments of common standards. Now is not the time to review that history, as interesting as it may be. What is important to know is that the Lindhurst Public School System, our grade level curricular programs are aligned to the national standards. And that, the PARC tests measures the degree of mastery of knowledge and skills taught by our grade level subjects. The data Mrs. DeMarco will show this evening will be clear and relatively simple to understand. It is our essential objective to use this data, to use the evidence, to inform curricular and instructional initiatives and to improve overall teacher effectiveness and student performance. This information will help us maximize our district's professional development initiatives. Through professional development training, our administrators and teachers are becoming much more conversant, much more comfortable, and much more confident in analyzing the data and using that information to inform classroom decisions, activities, and general instruction. It's the intention of the Central Office Administration and the Board of Education to continuously inform the students and the parent community, as well as the community at large, of our educational goals and the, and the outcomes, many of which are reflected through high-stakes testing. We want every stakeholder to know and understand what high-stakes testing is and what it is not. We will strive to demystify the data and share it with the public in an honest and clear manner. Although standardized testing is only one measure of achievement and success, the reality is that it is an important measure of educational success. This data will surely show great improvement steadily and consistently over time because we are committed, fully committed, to improving every aspect of our academic program. Although tonight, we will be focusing our attention on PARC results, let us not, however, forget the many other measures of achievement in the areas of social and civic behavior of our students, community involvement of our students, co-curricular and extracurricular accomplishments of our students, fine and performing arts participation, interstolastic athletics, and community involvement as well. Thank you very much for your attention, Mrs. DeMarco, if you'd be so kind. She'll be making a presentation and again, I think you'll be a true representative. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, I thank Dr. Grillo for that great introduction. It really sets the tone for what it is we want to share with you this evening. It is a state requirement that we always share with the public, our district results. What's important for you to know is the data goes so much deeper than what you're going to see tonight. So, for educators like myself and our teachers and our administrators, it's kind of like Christmas morning when these score reports come in because we really get to dive in and see and analyze and just keep working and working and working the numbers. The great thing about these reports is it provides us with data we've never had before. It's breaking down student performance into so many components and the individualized score reports really let us see student by student by student what is needed. And it's, you know, it's, it's that kind of information that really makes us feel that finally, there's a task that's giving us something that's worthwhile. So, what I'm going to do throughout this slideshow is just kind of briefly show you how we got to PARC, talk about our results, and allow you to see what we're now going to do with those results. So, New Jersey switched over to the PARC after coming up with a new mission statement in 2008. And the mission statement was that they were going to educate all students to make sure that they led productive, fulfilling lives. So, this was really the focus on the whole child, if you will. And the idea here was that from the moment students enter preschool, we were ultimately working to prepare them for college and career readiness. And it was a matter of identifying what's known in education backwards by design, what is needed at the end, and how do we break that down through essentially thirteen or fourteen grade levels to get students from PK through grade twelve and have them graduate with the skills that are needed. And of course, included in those skills would be 21st century skills because that's where they would be, um, living their lives. Now, we had the NJHSPA, which was the High School Proficiency Assessment. We also had the NJASK, and they were focused on New Jersey students only. So, the idea with PARC was to identify a way to let students move from, um, one state to another, focus on the standards, and still be, not feel like they're behind or they learned something different or at a different rate or sequence or level than other students. And that was the idea behind the end-of-course assessments. So, with PARC, the assessment program worked so that whatever course the student is taking in the current year, that's the test they then take. So, for example, we offer Algebra One to some of our eighth graders as well as ninth graders. The eighth graders in Algebra One would be taking the Algebra One assessment. Ninth graders in Algebra One would also be taking the Algebra One assessment. So, it's not necessarily a grade level assessment once you get to the specific courses, but it is a course, end-of-course assessment, if you will. So, 2015, we adopted the PARC to replace our NJASK and HESPA tests. This spring, students took PARC in ELA as well as mathematics, again, based on the coursework that they were enrolled in. And, um, their current year coursework needs to determine what assessment it is that they're going to take as they progress. Now, the biggest problem we have is that you can't measure PARC testing to the HESPA or to the NJASK because they're totally different approaches. NJASK and HESPA tests were very much the fill-in-the-bubble type tests. Here's your question. Here are your four choices. Pick the one that, that, that is the correct answer. PARC changed that. PARC required students to explain their thinking, explain their answers. They really had to write things out, show their work, if you will. So, to look at the scores of PARC and try to compare them to a HESPA or NJASK score, it really doesn't work. So, what the PARC consortium did was they looked at other types of tests that are given throughout the nation to identify other tasks that also ask students to show their work or explain their answers. And then they compared how students did on those tests to how they did on PARC. So, roughly, the numbers were pretty much in alignment. In, um, grade eleven and reading grade twelve, which was a comparison, they were spot on there. PARC math, grade four, students had a little bit more trouble than they did on the National Assessment for Educational Progress in that grade level. But if you notice in grade four, English Language Arts, students did better on the PARC than they did on the National Assessment for Educational Progress. So, they tried to get an idea as to how students were doing by comparing PARC to other tests that aren't like PARC. So, that gives you an idea as to how the numbers match up there. It's also important to recognize that, you know, one of the key things about PARC is very, very similar to, um, how the SAT is. So, when students are in grades ten and eleven and they're taking the SAT to see their readiness for college, they also have similar work as is seen on PARC. So, they looked at the PARC and the SAT. On SAT, 2015, eighty percent of all New Jersey seniors took that test. Forty-four met what SAT determines to be their benchmark math and ELA score, which is a fifteen fifty. So, again, you might look at the PARC scores and say, oh, forty-one percent, forty-eight percent, what are you talking about here? Well, we're talking about really good benchmark scores and they are in alignment with how majority of students do on tests like this, um, similar to the ACT. So, the achievement test, you might hear the ACT. It's an alternative test, particularly for students who are looking for, um, study in a very particular area. It's a subject-based test. And, um, forty-three percent of students who take the ACT make their benchmark score. Now, what we did was we played with the numbers. Thanksgiving weekend was a fun weekend for me because I got to break this all down and I mean that sincerely because it's fun, um, because of the results. If you take a look here, we have every grade level going down the first list. And next to each grade level is the number of students at that grade in our district who took that assessment. The next column there gives us the average of all PARC test takers. So, all the students who took PARC across the nation, that was their average score. The middle column tells us the average score of all students in New Jersey who took that particular PARC test. And the final column tells us what Lindhurst's average score was. Every, um, comparison that's noted in green means that we were either equal to or above the state and/or the nation in PARC scores. So, when you look at that overall, it's very, very positive. We can also identify where some of our weaknesses are and that really helps us too. That's the critical information because now we know exactly where we have to zone in and enhance and, and, and improve upon some of our work and our, our students' skill sets. In mathematics, same rose, PARC average, state average, as well as our district average. And again, we're seeing lots of green and we're seeing sprinkles of red as well. So, it gives us some good information as to where we are and where we need today. The interesting thing about the grade level scores is this. We found that particularly students in the high school level coursework, the geometry, the Algebra Two, the, um, English at eleven grade, ELA, our participant numbers were the lowest. That was where so many students chose not to take the test. We don't have opt-out. We have test refusal. They refuse to take the test by stating they're allowed to do that. What we also found was the reason for that for many of those students was because of the SATs they were taking, AP tests they were taking, as well as some other work that they had on their plate. And when we took a look at that data, we recognized that majority of our high-performing students chose not to take these tests. So, we're really not getting the truest data at our highest levels because some of our most high-performing students aren't even incorporated into these averages. So, one of our goals is to really get students and parents and caregivers to recognize that these tests are beyond useful than just the score reports. It's another practice for their SAT. It's another means of completing a graduation requirement for high, for, um, high school graduation. And it can also be a score that's used that eliminates the need for them to take a college placement test. So, truthfully, by coming to school, learning what they're learning, and applying that on the tests, they're satisfying lots of different other requirements. So, that's going to be something that we're going to work on, communicating to our community, particularly at the higher levels. And I think that in, in some of those areas, we're going to see those numbers increase. So, we have five levels in PARC. Levels one, two, and three essentially do not demonstrate, um, the expectation requirements. So, scores in the levels one, two, or three are shown below the benchmark, scores in four meeting, and level five exceeding.
Shawna, would you keep that up for a sec?
Of course.
Level one, the scores start at six fifty, six hundred and fifty, up to level five, eight hundred and fifty. And that's how, when, when parents look at the scores of their children, they'll get them in numbers of six hundred, seven hundred, or eight hundred. And of course, they'll also have the category of four or five, which is the optimal category, of course.
This data gets a little bit deeper, but essentially, what this does is it breaks it down into each grade level and how much percent of students in that grade level were at level one, level two, level three, and then level four and five were in the blue. So, what I then did was I looked at our district percentages of students at levels four and five and compared them to the state as well as the national averages there. And anything in blue means that we were within about, um, four percent, which would be what the state would see as certainly meeting requirements. Anything in green showed that we far exceeded. We were beyond, we were five percent or more in those areas. And anything in red showed that we were slightly below or, or more below. So, that's what we have going on there. And you can see our grade ten, um, our grade ten ELA, as noted in the other slide as well, is, is one of the areas of deficiency we want to work on, whereas grade seven ELA, we're really, um, far exceeding by eight percent and eighteen percent against the averages. So, we could take away a lot from this type of data. And then something very similar with our mathematics. Again, same color code procedure. And here, if you look at Algebra Two, we're exceeding by ten percent and thirteen percent the national and the PARC averages. So, there, there's a whole lot of trends here that, that we can learn from. Um, and again, this is just surface data. When we really go in, we see the placement of the students and the coursework and their individualized data, we're really going to be able to take a lot from this and enhance our curriculum. What are some of the main questions we're going to use as educators? Well, where are our strengths and our gaps? That's going to be, you know, pretty self-evident at first and then it's going to become a little more complicated for us to determine the more precise areas, but certainly, we want to make that a conversation topic. And how are we going to talk about this data? You know, what, there, there's so much to talk about, so much to look at. How, how are those conversations going to go? This is brand new for us because we've never had this precision in our reporting. So, how are we as teachers going to work through that? And how are we going to share that with parents? So, at home, parents and caregivers can really support the students' needs. And then finally, you know, what are the professional resources that we're going to need to identify what, what it is each student will require of us in order to help them improve and help them enhance their experience? So, these are the main questions that we're certainly going to be starting with as our conversations about PARC data. What can you expect as parents and caregivers? Well, we're waiting on just another, uh, delivery or two of individualized score reports, but once we have all of them, they're all going to get distributed to you. Even if your child did not take PARC, Even if your child did not take Park, you're still going to get a mock report of a fake student, if you will, so that you can see what you would have received on your student had he or she participated in Park. And hopefully, the data will be treated to you, and you'll want to know this information about your own child. Again, the information that you'll see, we've never seen before on reports. It's broken down, it's color-coded, it's numeric, everything is clearly explained, and it not only gives you a subject area, but the various types of questions that were in that subject area, so you really know your child's strengths and areas that are in need of some more help and assistance. We've also composed a cover letter for you. On that cover letter, we included multiple resources that you can go to on websites so that at home, you have some ways of helping your child. You can get more information, there's video links, there's all types of ways to get more information beyond the score report. And in addition, we also encourage you in that letter to speak to your child's teacher, speak to your child's counselor. If your child's a high schooler, let him or her go talk to a counselor, talk to his or her teacher, to really say, you know, what could you help me know more about myself from this report? So let's use them as conversation pieces. This is an idea as to what they would look like. Again, the color coding, the numerics, student performance, score graphs, all kinds of information's going to be on here. And again, every subject area is broken down into the types of questions that it had. UnderstandTheScore.org is a great starting resource for parents, caregivers, and people who are interested in knowing more about the data that are included on this report. So that's highly recommended. And finally, we have to, you know, take it all back and look at it in wide scope. And for me, upon first receiving the data and really taking it all in, I think it showed me two great pieces of information about our district overall. One was that we're not teaching to a test, we're teaching to our curriculum. And by teaching to the curriculum, the students are able to sit down in front of a test they've never seen before, many of them in a format they had never taken a test before because it was all computer-based, and succeed and demonstrate success. So for me, it really validated that, no, we don't have to teach to a test, let's create the right curriculum that's based on the standards, teach the standards, and they'll do well on the test, the results will be there. But more importantly, I think it was just about the atmosphere that was created, and I dedicate so much of that accomplishment to our principals, our supervisors, and our teachers, because these students, again, were taking a test in a format they've never taken it in before. Some were taking them in computer labs in front of desktops, headphones on, others were on iPads in the gym, many, many students in there, and everyone was very relaxed and comfortable, and there was a sense of confidence in these rooms. And that exposed itself on the score reports. So the idea that it's not only what we're teaching, but how we're teaching and the types of classroom environments and school environments that we have, it was very validating to me. And, you know, it just made me so proud of everything that we're working on day by day because, you know, creating those environments is just as important as the instruction that we're providing. So providing instruction in an environment where kids feel nervous and anxious is not healthy, and, you know, it has to be the right blend, and I think we're certainly there. And that's really what I wanted to point out here on this closing slide. The Lynn Hurst Public Schools will continue to teach the Common Core standards in classroom and school environments that support the academic, emotional, and social development of each and every student. Our district's professional team of educators is certain that this approach to education far surpasses any approach that teaches to the test. By staying focused on the academic standards of each content area and nurturing each child's individual needs, there will be a daily fostering of college and career readiness skills, strong achievement outcomes, and confident, capable, caring students are sure to result. We thank you so much for your attention and your time and your support of our students at home.
A couple of things are very important, I think that need to be highlighted. The national statistics, a little alarming last year with respect to the percentage of opt-outs or parent refusals in terms of having their children take Park. In Burton County, some of the upper Burton County schools, the percentage of students that opted out, so to speak, was quite significant. In some cases, in the eighty and ninety percentile. And the vast majority of students or parents who had their, you know, children refuse to take the test, the vast majority of that percentage were high-performing students. So as you know, there was a lot of controversy nationwide last year with respect to Park and Park administration. The point that Shauna made over and over again merits continued reinforcement in our community, and that is this: we're not proponents of, nor are we advocates, opponents of Park. What we are proponents of is great teaching and dedicated students to learning the curriculum. The results of Park will be high if we do a great job teaching and students and parents work in a very diligent fashion with respect to the expectations that we have for children in each and every classroom, in each and every subject. So we have to play by the rules of the game because New Jersey is involved in Park, at least in the immediate future, but it doesn't matter if they change the test. There are other consortia for other tests nationwide. We happen to be in New Jersey, engaged in Park, but it doesn't matter because if we do a great job, as I said, in terms of teacher effectiveness and student learning, we're going to perform well on any form, on any assessment. Shauna, I think if anyone has any questions, please feel free to ask them, otherwise we'll get back to the board business. Any questions whatsoever?
This PowerPoint will be on the website, so if you want to take a look more closely at the numbers. Again, I remind you that the data that we have that we're going to be using goes much deeper, and we're really grateful to have that data. But when you get your child's own score reports, do please take the time to look them over. Any questions or concerns, always start with your child's teacher or counselor, but do not think that you're limited only to those people. Our principals, our supervisors are very, you know, very knowledgeable and very aware of everything that will help you better understand them, and they, too, will assist you as well, as will we at Central Office if it isn't handled well at the school level.
Yes. This test is not mandatory for every student?
It is the state standardized test, so it replaces NJASK, HSPA. But the state does offer, they recognize, if you will, test refusal. So if a parent refuses...
So how to search the kids that refuse?
Yeah.
And that's really a negative, unfortunate.
That's tough for us because we don't really know what their needs are at a strong... You know, of course, this is only one component of so many things, but it's one component that's missing from those students.
Why did they choose not to adopt Park?
Um, I think there's a variety, you know, I think Park was new, it was unknown, and I think there was a lot of, you know, focus on the level at which students were going to be required to be performing. I think there was concern over that. Again, we also had it taking up a lot of time last year. This year it's only half the time, so Park, you know, the state was really open to hearing some of those concerns. And then, as I had noted, some of the students at the higher levels were faced with other tests at the same time, and they kind of saw it as a choosing approach, as opposed to saying, ooh, this would be one more practice for me to do well on those. So, yeah. The unknown, the new, so hopefully, we'll have a better result this year.
There's a question. The states that opted out of the Park, how do they base their criteria as comparisons to people that were in Park?
It's a great question.
Do they have their own gender, do they have their own comparison?
Yeah, they're making their own state-based tests. I mean, there's one other test out there, I don't know how many states are using a Smarter Balance.
Yeah, Smarter Balance, there are about twenty-five states. It seems increasingly the number of states that are essentially developing their own assessments have been increasing dramatically. So it's going to be very interesting. You'll read in virtually every paper, every news report, just keep up, keep current in terms of what's going on. But the fact of the matter is, again, in New Jersey, we have Park. The greater percentage that we have in terms of student test takers, the overall, in my judgment, the overall average will be higher.
Thank you so much.
I just want to thank you very much for the presentation, both Shauna and Dr. Quinno. I think the district finally has made a turn. We're moving in a positive direction. You can see that with some of the scores. The scores are looking better, and, you know, our district is actually getting recognized for various things, academically, not just through athletics. So I think that's great, and I think that's a testament to the leadership of the two people to my left. I need to...
Can I just say something? Many, some of the board members had the opportunity to attend the National Arts Society inductions last week, and it was a beautiful ceremony, and many of our students were recognized for their academic achievement. So that is a wonderful opportunity for the children, and it really showcases the children of Lynn Hurst and their academic excellence. We also had the privilege of going to see Twelve Angry Durers, and I want to publicly commend Christina Coppola on her great production, as well as the students who participated, and the band members that also played, and the pit people, and as well as the stage hands. So it was a very enjoyable evening.
Just one more thing. Make sure you get on our website and get the slides since we only get a handful of parents that show up, so they didn't get to hear the good news. We're just going to do non-agenda items. Anybody has any issues of non-agenda items? Any motion to go into executive session for personnel?